April thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, meeting on the building here. I'm gonna switch the agenda because the second I was gonna compare the quick. That is, I'm sorry, general business. You're here for?
For the temple job?
Station at Temple.
All right. Where is this on the agenda?
That's under general business.
Okay.
Eight sixty-six.
Okay, fine. Eight sixty-six, name three. It's definitely a firm. Please step forward.
Wait, would you like me to stand?
Excuse me?
Is there a specific location you'd like for me to stand?
Right in front of the computer view?
Yeah. Thank you. You're welcome.
You just introduce yourself.
My name is Jenna Shea. I am an engineer at, I'm a project manager and engineer at DePree Engineering.
Yeah.
I am here on behalf of the applicant for the eight sixty-six South Main Street in New Temple Project. This project was previously approved on October twenty-sixth of two thousand eighteen. At that time, the project was permitted with Andrews Survey and Engineering Company, which has since been acquired by DePree Engineering, which is why I'm here today.
Good.
And that project was the phase one construction of that project was permitted to be completed on November twenty-seventh of two thousand twenty-two. And due to COVID, the temple had to shut down their facility and were no longer allowed to get as much funding as they were anticipating for the project. And therefore, they are requesting a extension of their permit so that they can do the construction now that they have more funding coming in for their facility. The permit was, uh, also due to the COVID protocol in the state of Massachusetts, um, there was an extension added to the permits that was the equivalent of approximately four hundred and sixty-two days, which is the length of the state of emergency. And so therefore, the permit would actually not expire until March third of two thousand twenty-four. Um, but just to kind of cover our bases, we just wanted to come here today to request an extension formally through the town.
No.
Um, so we are requesting a five-year extension to be added to the permit expiration date of March third, two thousand twenty-four, which is when the permit would be set to expire through the COVID extension. And this would allow for the applicant to receive the donations and funding from the organization and be able to construct both phase one and phase two before the deadline of March third, two thousand twenty-nine. Um, if you have any questions, I am open to answer any questions and we have representatives here for the applicant as well.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Um, I will hold off on questions. Ron?
Well, I'm good.
I'm good.
Um, so. So we're essentially writing a six-year extension, right?
It considerably, I guess it would be a six-year extension. Um, it's, we, I was calling it a five-year extension due to the one year being the COVID extension from the state. Um, so we, yeah, I guess there would be six years.
So is it, and what? I'm just curious, why would you come back now then if it's a year away from the fire?
Because when I was discussing with the town and, and kind of discussing internally with some other engineers at my company, um, it just kind of, they had mentioned it's better to bring it up with the town, especially since we hadn't communicated with the state and it's not really defined anywhere, the extension. So we wanted to just make sure that the permit didn't lapse with the dates that the, that Bellingham had.
Could you go over real quickly where you, what you've completed at this point? Have you done any, like, you be cleared the land or where, where to stand on that?
Yeah, I can, I can speak.
Yeah, just real briefly, just.
Yeah, sure.
Thirty thousand feet.
Yes. Good evening. My name is Michael Mayapan. I think I met some of you in the previous hearings, president of Bellingham and also a member of the Temple congregation. So as Jenna explained, um, we have not done much to the premises besides some clearing some, you know, some driveways, access driveway in the front and clearing up some trees that we did before COVID. Um, so we have not accessed the land since then uh, because primarily because our congregation members have been not been visiting the temple that we have right now because of COVID, we had to follow some strict protocols. So besides clearing the entrance because of our bushes and in our Sunday to read there and carrying some access paths so that we can go check on the site, we have not done much to this. And we have kind of fenced up and gated up, so there's no trespassing and, and it puts signs of private property. Um, so that's, that's the extent what we have done so far.
Thank you.
Yeah, but all the architecture renderings and all the construction documents, the engineering company have all been finalized. So we were just waiting for the time and to get that at that time we were with the town. We will advise that it's better to get that extension, yeah, run because it takes time for these, you know, projects. Thank you.
I want to pick up on something Brian mentioned. Is it possible compromise? How long will it take you to build this once you have fund?
Because it's a joint undertaking with the architects here, we have, we have a third HFA, uh, architects in Franklin. And together, because of the structure of the temple, we have also an architect in India who's designing it. Um, so it does require transportation of materials and labor on both sides. So it's kind of hard to estimate when exactly from the time they start, whether permitting winter times, I would think that they would not be able to operate. So we want to give the buffer, you know, how, how long it takes to complete, right? So.
Would a four-year extension be feasible as opposed to five years?
In four years.
In essence, what we're gonna do is count the five years starting with twenty-three and going to twenty-eight. Is that, is that feasible? And then if need be, you can come back? Again?
Okay. Yeah, I mean, we were just curious because we have no, we have no prior experience with the town besides getting the approval at that time. So the extension, knowing that we are nonprofit villages, you know, if we can come back if we need to at that time and we can request for that, it's okay.
And then in that process, um, I, I don't think it, um, I'm looking forward to rebuilding that, right? Can you try to screen the fence and do actually start construction?
I'm sorry, screen?
Try to screen the gates temporarily for, you know, two or three years where you have the funding.
Either landscaping or would, would that entail landscaping or just a fence that had?
Putting slats in.
Okay.
Or landscaping.
Uh, screen meaning like to, I mean, I'm not, I'm not.
So that people can't see on.
We want.
They can't see into the property.
Yes.
I see.
As you know, I know what you want to do.
Right.
But we just, you have reduced the fact that it's vacant for a period of time by putting slats in the fence.
I see.
And we reduce, I know what, harshness is not the right word. But you just reduce the overall fact that it looked like something's going to happen. Is that realistic?
I, that seems very realistic. There's nothing to add.
Um, would entertain a motion?
Check Jim?
I'm, I'm, I'm just.
Yeah. He's on there.
Did you make the comments?
No, not, nothing further. I think that was covered. I, the original, um, decision references phase one and phase two. Um, so if there is any, uh, decision, if the board would, uh, consider uh, making reference to, uh, phase one and phase two, whether that is, you know, four years for phase one, five years, phase two, whatever it may be. Um, just making reference to be consistent with the original decision would be preferred.
Okay.
So Jim, what do you mean? So if you explain that, is there a timing sequence that we should be aware of or?
Well, so the original decision, uh, states that phase one shall be substantially completed within a period of forty-eight months from the date of this decision. Phase two shall be substantially completed within a period of thirty-six months from the date of occupancy for phase one. So if you would like to stay consistent with that, you could, you state, uh, four years for phase one and one year for phase two, uh, that built or that is, uh, from the date of, uh, occupancy of phase one perhaps.
That's a little bit different than your four-year, maybe five, right, Jim?
Right, so that, that would essentially be an extension of five years if, for both phases in total. Uh, you could certainly do three and four though, if, if that is the preference of the board.
I'm a minimal team.
Four and one?
Four, four and one, that will, yeah, put them up to twenty-eight, starting in.
Excellent launch. There's also the, the, actually, the only concern I think the board has is just letting things go in a drip. You know, I mean, things happen all the time. Nobody foresaw COVID, you know?
Right, right.
We just don't like to have half constructed and something's on the side of road. People forget boards change and all that stuff.
Yeah.
Then or is over here, so. That's, that's our only concern. We're not looking to, yeah, hold anybody up. We just want to make sure that we advise them.
Which is very understandable. The applicant is actively starting to work on the project and, and work on funding and finances and everything for it, so.
So Jim, the wording of the motion should be. So, uh, extend the phase one for four years effective March of twenty-three. And then phase two extended additionally beyond that to March of twenty-eighth. So phase one was up until March of twenty-seven, four years in this past month. And then the initial phase would go five years in this past month. So twenty-eight, I mean, and obviously, if you need more time, we'll, we'll be, I know.
Does that work for you, Jim, the way it was said?
Yes, that, that, that absolutely can work as long as the applicants of the board are, are in agreement.
So.
And again, I can't stress enough, if you need anything else, please come back. We're hoping for a happy hearing now.
Right, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So I think, for the caveat, I think that you previously said with the condition of the screening and slats and all that.
So it would just be the slats on the fencing and?
Trying to deter the kids, you know, and, you know, and other people looking down at.
I, I don't want you to go overboard in that.
Yeah.
Is this just at the entrance or the, so?
Because we have a gate, we have a locked gate.
Yeah, right. And you can see right through that gate.
Yep.
Where you can screen that gate for you, if, you know, somebody comes up to it or driving by.
Right, right.
Got it.
Be going, what's down there?
You know, over, you know, over time for five years, I don't become an attractive nuisance to kids.
Right, because right now, I think we, there's no, because we kind of fenced up on the sides as well and entire front unless it sneak in through the, another way.
Just to come out of the air.
Yeah, we understand. No, we can definitely, you know. Yes.
Just second.
We'll give a motion.
Four years to be said.
Bye, Mr. Tribune.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Dennis says yes.
Aye.
Brian says yes. Bill says yes. Bill says yes.
Next is yes.
Next is yes. Unless you announce it. Congratulations.
Great.
We look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Best of luck.
Yeah, thank you.
Again, if you need anything, please let us know.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
The next item on the agenda, again, we're gonna slip around for a moment. Uh, continuation on the public hearing, Trail Estates. I think it's a fairly simple extension. They would like to extend it to May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. I have a motion to, um, Jim, is there anything you need to update in regards to that?
No, no updates at this time.
Go. If I have a second.
Second.
So motion upon continuing to May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. Any additional discussion? Al for the vote?
Aye. Aye.
Brian, Bill says yes. Yes, Bill says yes.
Next is yes.
That is unanimous. Next on the agenda is to continue public hearing for President Phil of States. Like this, that part? For the Florida judge.
Thank you. So, as the board may recall, my, first of all, my name is Luke Petrosi, people, all speak for all in court. Um, as the board, when you call it, we got a, uh, the board wished me to notify the butters that we were continuing this public hearing for the intent and purpose to discuss waivers and any other questions or issues that came up that might be still out there. Um, we took the initiative following our meeting to address some of the comments that the board made at that time and revise the plans to, uh, isolate the, you know, stormwater basins on their own individual lots, put, um, a chain of fence around the, uh, the boundary of those basins and also to, uh, move the stormwater basin out of the inner Riptarian zone that the, um, the, the little bit of controversy over. So with that, we did submit those plans. I think you have them in front of you and, um, hoping that, uh, we can discuss any other waivers that might be, um, something discussion that the board may be concerned about and, um, we, we want to close the hearing now. Get to a final decision.
Um. I want to start with questions and then we're gonna change the review. Brian?
I was just out, uh, at Jim, like, is it, is there any loose end from our point of view?
Excuse me?
I, I'm pointing to Jim on my.
Oh, yeah, okay, all right.
I assume.
I'm sorry, Brian, you're breaking up a little bit. Could it, could you beat that?
Yeah, I was just curious from your point of view if there's any loose end that needs to be figured out tonight.
I got you. Well, so just real quick, uh, just, uh, if I may, just a real quick recap of where we left off just for, uh, the general public, uh, that we have a few online. Um, from the last meeting, I know we've, uh, the board has been discussing this with the applicant for some time now and it was the board's requ- request that he, uh, the applicant re-notify, uh, the general public or the butters of the project, uh, just for an opportunity if anybody has anything new to offer. So if, uh, you know, perhaps, uh, once the board is done with initial questions, if there's anybody in the public that has any, anything new to, to offer in this regard for this project. Uh, but in terms of the, the plans themselves, they have been revised in accordance with what was requested at the last meeting, putting the basins on different, uh, lots, putting fences around them, moving out of, outside of the Riptarian zone that was requested. Um, and so you do have a plan before you that reflects that. Uh, one, uh, condition that I certainly would stress is that, uh, before any building permit that, uh, you know, a, a peer review of the revised stormwater be established or completed, excuse me. Uh, so that, you know, if there's any tweaks to the stormwater further, uh, we have, uh, set up as an engineering, uh, team that represents the town that can, uh, review and, uh, make sure it's in, you know, in the town's best interest. Um, obviously also as a result of the Franklin decision for the access, uh, their condition was that it to be, uh, private. Uh, so therefore, the recommendation, obviously, continuing, uh, that, uh, so that it's all a private way, uh, also in, in Bellingham.
Thank you, Jim. I don't remember. Well, I, um, well, actually, just one item. So it sounds like most of those items were addressed. Was there any, um, revisions to the plan? I know one of the basins, there was that separation of groundwater issue. Or is that going to be meshed out when, because I know?
Well, could, to answer that question, uh, quite honestly, under the, uh, regulations, uh, because these are, these, uh, three-foot lots were only required now two foot of separation to groundwater, but these have all been designed with four feet of separation. So we comply with the higher standard.
Yep.
That is applied, um, by your stormwater management pilot.
That's just my question. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I have a question for you. Do you plan on clear cutting these lots?
I don't have no idea. They were, they were, but, uh, usually you don't.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, some of them before it ain't go a lot.
I know, you wouldn't, you may destroy the, the, the beauty of it. It wouldn't, uh, you wouldn't voluntarily clear them. Okay. Somebody may ask, you know, for a specific use of, or agency to do that appropriately.
Right, exactly. Okay.
Uh, wouldn't be our intention to, uh, to do that. We'd clear for, we would build in that lot.
That's all, all, and thank you.
To it of, uh, why the thought, even if that happened, or?
Yeah, okay.
You have set the systems that that's going to, so.
Right. Yeah.
Yes.
About that.
Did the, um, I know there was a traffic study, but did the, did the safety officer weigh in on that?
I have, I have no idea. We made requests to, to police, fire, we haven't had. We haven't had any comments from anybody since the hearing was open and police are by.
So police and fire have not weighed in on this yet.
We do have, uh, the traffic report to verify, to, to, to verify safety.
Typically, we send those out to peer review, in a way.
My honest.
So I've never seen one that hasn't gone out.
Well, that was, that was sent out to peer review, they, it's in their lands, in their correspondence of the same fourteen, so.
Jim, were there any issues on that, do you remember?
Yeah, so police and fire have, uh, discussed this matter, uh, through our internal, uh, department, uh, meetings. They had no concerns over the, uh, the two-acre subdivision, uh, lots. Obviously, concerns about potential for denser developments and hold their judgment for anything that comes, uh, forward for that. But in terms of the two-acre subdivision lot, as, as shown, that there was no concerns, uh, stated to me.
Thank you, Jim. I have nothing to add.
I, I have a few questions. Um, assuming we're going down the road and we give you a favorable decision. What's the next step?
Well, I think the board recognizes that this plan was filed to grandfather the property from the zoning change that took place for elimination of townhouses. So we do anticipate a, some sort of a filing at some point down the line for a multi-unit development on the site. Um, much more involved in little subdivision like this, but, so, um, I've had some brief conversations with, uh, Jim regarding, uh, you know, sort of a roundtable discussion with town boards or town departments to get an understanding of what some issues or concerns may be going down the road and understand there's traffic and there's, and there's environmental issues that need to be addressed as we go forward, but um, that would be, I'll, maybe what would happen in the next, let's say, three to six months.
But you, here, here are my concern. We're, um, attention is going to grant your favorable decision. I would like to put things in there in the event it's a favorable decision to protect the town in the event this is. My understanding is, at one point, there was concern about adequate water supply for, um, fire protection. I would like to, in the event you just recovered the town, if this was to happen, you would address those concerns. I believe they want to fire, um, hydrants in the property.
Quite honestly, we have not received any report either in, of, of fire. Uh, but we're happy to place hydrants at the discretion of the fire department, whether they see that.
Jim, I, I've seen something that affect.
Yes, yeah, so, uh, Don DiMartino, former DPW director, did state that, uh, he recommended that the board, uh, makes a condition of fire hydrant placement uh, because he didn't have the jurisdiction to do that. That was in his letter. Uh, so you, we can certainly reference any condition to, uh, hydrants at the discretion of the, uh, the, the fire chief, if the board so chooses.
And that would involve a group system, correct?
Quite potentially, yes.
Okay. Um, and then we, we're agreeing, I hope, on having fencing in front of the pot, the detention lots.
Oh, sure, it's on the board.
Thank you for doing that. One thing I, I think regardless of the path on where this goes, and I know, I think you've already built some properties in Franklin. That is a very tough intersection to, um, pull in and out.
Leg Street.
Yes.
Absolutely.
And your plans, you plan to widen those sightlines?
Well, uh, if you want to get into that, it's definitely, you know, before Don DiMartino left, he provided you with some plans or intersection.
Correct.
As you may know, they're in the right of way, so the town owns quite a bit of land to, uh, to allow for an expansion of that intersection.
Mm-hmm.
So I think when we get to that point and we start discussing, there's obviously many ways that you can do it. You know, we have traffic consultant that will probably make some recommendations. But there is an opportunity there to, uh, create another path uh, or modify that intersection to, uh, make it safer.
Okay.
Because there is a quite a sightline of problem there.
Oh, well, again, what I'm looking at is although you believe, believe this is a process, we're giving you the ability to build, um, homes on two-acre lots. I'd like part of the condition to be, is this document, it's got a left of its own, you can fully decide what you want to do.
Correct.
You're just right now using this process, she was like, as a stakeholder, correct?
Much.
So I would like to see a condition that, um, that area be addressed and widened as we go forward from this project to future project.
Well, absolutely.
And that brings us to Jim, the discussion on waivers.
We have comments for whatever.
I'm sorry?
We have comments from the public whenever.
Okay. Who has your hand up?
Oh, we actually have multiple people online here that have a couple of comments, if you'd like to open up to the public at this time.
Yeah.
Excellent. So the, the first comment, if you'd like, is that, I believe, three eighty-one Prospect Street?
Uh, yes, three eighty-one Prospect Street.
And you can, uh, uh, state to the, the board a, any comments or concerns you have and they can certainly respond to them.
Okay, sounds good. So, um, I would like to know how the construction easements that are on, uh, three eighty-one Prospect Street where I live would be used. Um, and also like in the current construction easements, there's no end date for these. So I would like to know what those end date are because it just says until, until needed and that's like quite vague.
Okay. Jim, how long would this decision be in effect?
Well, so that, that's reflecting, um, and, um, uh, Mr. Petrosi could, uh, maybe state or, uh, expand upon this. But that's a construction easement that's on a, a, on A and R property that was previously subdivided and constructed on, I believe. Uh, so there is likely, um, some agreement between those two parties. I don't know, uh, Mr. Petrosi, if you could speak to that?
Is, is this one of the lots that we sold? The, is that what we're talking about?
This is three eighty-one Prospect Street, yes.
So this is a lot adjacent to the proposed right-of-way into the property.
Correct.
If I'm correct. Well, depending on the, uh, board's decision, right? Um, you know, there is plans to enter the property in that location. But once we get, we will do that, we'll begin that process and, um, try to clean up that area so that the neighbors on either side have a, uh, you know, cleaned area there. But in terms of future expansion beyond that, that will take, you know, we'll find out when.
Will you give that with another?
Correct. Right.
The policy.
Yeah.
So, I mean, ma'am, I, I think what he wants to do is clean that area up until, um, he determines. What his next proposal will be. To uh, allocate. Right now, we're addressing a proposal that reserves his rights. To look at. Other options down the road by submitting to us development for two acre lots. In the interim, if the one he finally finds, he wants to do. He will be cleaning up those lots.
Right, exactly.
And that can be part of the condition. So that'll be a condition on um. A fair, a favorable decision.
Two follow-up questions to that. Thank you so much for that response, like. One, um. Since it's. I mean, like not having a certain timeline to end these construction easements on our land, I'm not sure, like. If that can be left to perpetuity and like any plans and further development that we don't have any visibility to. So it would be great to get like a timeline to say it ends on so-and-so date and so-and-so year. Um, number two. Um, since like currently in the easement area, we have like, you know, um, trees in the Bellingham part of the. Uh, uh, construction easement. Um, if there is going to be cutting of any of these, those trees, we would like to have a plan agreed upon. Um, for how the replacement of it would be done, or what, what is mutually like, you know, agreeable. Because that's like greenery being cut.
May, may I clarify, is this easement already executed between both parties?
The, the easement was shown on the plan as a temporary construction easement for sloping and up. Activities. And I, I'll be happy to stop by and, and discuss with you what our plans are, and we can work out. An arrangement that, you know, hopefully makes you happy. But uh, at this point, there's no plans to take any trees down at the rear of your property.
Um, got it, okay.
Under any proposal.
Okay, so that, that would be a condition.
Through a lot as in Franklin, so.
I, I, I did that, uh. Transgendering value?
Yeah, the backyard is in Bellingham. We also pay taxes for Bellingham for that portion, so it's a mixed like. I think the part of the construction easement is definitely where the trees are in Bellingham.
Right, but they are on her a lot, so, I mean, I can't approach on her a lot without her permission, basically, so.
Her concerns with her?
Yeah, I can, I can say that we'll be um, and discuss over, right at this point, based on what I know, there are no. Plans to clear anything at the rear of our property.
It looks like you have some grading at the rear of the property.
It's already, it's already been done, though. The, the house is built and.
Okay.
And I wasn't the builder, we sold those lots off, and they had a building. According to the site plan that was approved by Franklin Conservation Commission.
Okay, so pretty much what has been cleared.
It's, it's what's going to be cleared, right?
I believe there's a question out there.
Yeah, we have another, we have a couple more questions here. Um, uh, Hope, I think you had a, you had a question?
No, press ahead.
Sorry, having trouble unmuting. Um.
That's fine.
Hi, my name. My name is Aggie Borishi. We're uh, my wife Hope and I, we're residents at five two five Lake Streets. Uh, so we're at the corner of Lake and Prospect, so. It sounded like there was a comment about expanding the intersection here, and some mention about. I guess the town having ownership of the property there at the corner, but to our understanding, we own the lot on both sides of. Lake Street.
Okay.
So, so. Obviously, we'd have to be informed if there's going to be any expansion.
A clarification on that? And that will be a, a condition moving forward? To clarify who owns the land. On the easements for uh, Lake Street?
Yeah, I, I, according to our, the deed from our house purchase, that's our property.
That's, if you can provide a copy of that, I'd appreciate it, because uh. That's the first time I've heard that. I asked the tenant, if he wanted to sell it to us. He said, no, no, we want that.
So condition of a clarification on. Land uh, ownership on Lake Street. And I, I don't mean to be presumptuous, but I, I thought, based on the information we had in front of us. That it was town land. And we were trying to get rid of some of those blind spots, especially. You know, easier to navigate.
So, uh, just to click, clarify, uh, I think the, when um, the director of DPW is stating uh, the improvements to Lake Street. Uh, I don't believe he's referring to um. Uh, the, the private property. I believe he's referring to the right of way, though, are you referring to the bulb? That's in the middle there?
I'm not sure I understand that question.
Sorry, let me pull it up right now, if I, if I could, if, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I'll, I'll share my.
Absolutely, Jim.
Thank you. Oh, um, Pam, do you mind allowing me to share my screen, please? There we are. Let's see here. Um, so, we're referring to this and this, right, so.
Correct.
Yeah.
Exactly, that, that area, yeah.
Yeah, that area there is, I believe, I believe the gentleman is correct. I believe that's, that's their property there, so what, some, uh, some discussion would have to take place. Uh, in order to improve upon that, I think what Don was referring to is this area here, but uh, you know. More discussion would certainly need to be had.
So would the intersection be going around the? Is Lake Street?
Well, we don't know.
Okay.
Yeah, right, right now, there's no, no plans to improve that, that location. If, if. The board would like, I know there's a couple people new on. Online here, I could share just the overall uh, plan as well.
I, I personally did not realize that.
I'm sorry, I understand, I.
But we'll, certainly, when we get to that point where we have a design, we'll solve it, and uh. And uh, discuss options or opportunities there.
So, Lake Street's over here, Prospect's down here. And what the proposal is right now is a proposed road kind of centered on this plan here. That goes back here with large lots on either side of it. Large two acre lots along Lake Street as well. Um, and as was mentioned by the board, uh, you know, this application is before the planning board for. Buy, write, two acre, single-family homes. Um, but we, you know, it's been stated uh, several times now that. Uh, the applicant, the property owner, has sought to move forward with this as a way to. Uh, freeze his zoning, uh, so there's lots of nuances to that, but there's. Um, the town has gotten or, or removed a certain bylaw for townhomes. And uh, and uh, this property owner has a potential to uh, freeze that zoning. Uh, through this process, and he has, he has uh, worked through this process, so the, the planning board is reviewing this. For two acre, single-family homes. Uh. So, but the reason there's no construction time schedule is that this may or may not be. Um, the plan that moves forward by the property owner. Um, and is, is. More or less an administrative process at this moment.
Any other questions, any other?
There's five more in the chat.
Okay.
I believe there's, uh, Jack?
Uh, yeah, so, um, we live at three twenty-six Prospect Street, which, um. Across the street from us is a larger, what I think is a lot that will be built upon. Um, my concern is uh, getting out of our driveway, because we can't get out of our driveway with the traffic as it is. And if um. A house was to be built across the street from us, my fear is that. We wouldn't be able to get out of our driveway at all. So I, my question is just like, what's the plan for that lot? Across from us, so it's a little bit further down from the intersection of Lake Street and Prospect Street. Not that far down, but a little bit. I think it's right before the proposed road if you're coming off of Lake Street. But I'm not sure.
So, so, you know, that, that lot will get built upon with a single-family home. We just haven't really, um. There's a good amount of gravel on that property that would have to be removed in order to develop it, so. Uh, that will happen sometime in the, yeah, future, but I can't give you a timetable on it.
And, and uh, it, Mr. Petrosi, is that uh, one of the A and R lots that is in Franklin?
That's correct.
Okay.
So, would the driveway come out onto Prospect Street or out onto Lake Street?
No, no, all the driveways for those lots come out onto Prospect Street.
So, potentially across the street from my house?
Well, it's definitely going to come in off of Prospect, yeah, I'm not quite familiar with your houses, but.
Well, I mean, I think I'm just concerned, first off, I don't know if any of. Anybody has actually come down here to sit. Um, and watch the traffic that comes down this road. But the traffic is very, very intense, so I, I would, I know you're talking about doing a traffic study and, and what have you. In the future, but I would just caution. To be wary of how busy the traffic is coming by my house, or just. It doesn't matter what time of day it is, it's just very, very busy, and the, the speed limit is. You know, such that people go a lot faster than they should, so, you know, um, I think I just want to be. Can, you know, I'd want to be informed as to how close to the street this house is going to be, where the driveway is going to come out. And whether or not the traffic study is going to take into consideration the um, massive, massive traffic that comes by. This area.
Well, both on Lake Street and Prospect Street.
Correct, yes, yeah.
If I may, real quick, uh, so, um, to that specific lot, that's an approved lot uh, through the town of Franklin. Uh, so, you know, not that it doesn't impact uh, an overall project. But I certainly would recommend reaching out to the town of Franklin's planning office. Uh, that, I would imagine they have an approved plan that they can show you. Uh, they don't, they don't submit those to us.
No, I mean, we're on the. The plot that I'm talking about, I was under the, the um, understanding that that's Bellingham, not Franklin.
No, although, although lots up front on Prospect Street, we don't have a Prospect Street um, in Bellingham, it's, that's all Franklin. So directly across the street from you, that's still Franklin uh, to the depth of, mo- almost to the depth of lot as we were talking about. Uh, with the uh, the first commenter, uh, who has a little bit of backyard in Bellingham as well. Uh, but the lots themselves are in Franklin.
So technically, ma'am, that lot you're talking about, about is not in front of us to see.
Okay.
We are, we are very willing. You, listen to you, put you in touch with the developer. But it is, unfortunately, and I apologize, it's, it's a Franklin issue.
I disagree, I don't believe it's, it's a Franklin lot, but you know, I'm not a builder, so you know, I would have to. It's, it's, yeah, the, um, my neighbor owns the property across the street from Lake Street. I'm talking about the property right. Off of. My neighbor's property, what we just talked about. But, you know, I'll hold off.
No, no, ma'am, I want you out, we will um. We'll, we'll be in touch with the developer.
Okay.
I know who owns the land, I, I. It appears it could be um, Franklin property.
Okay.
Put you in touch, just to clarify that.
All right.
It is Bellingham property. Will, there'll be a condition that. That they, they approach you, but I, I feel pretty confident, listening to Jim and the applicant, that it's Franklin land.
Sounds good, thank you, I appreciate your time.
You know, thank you, I, you're more than welcome. Uh, anyone else?
Just another question, I get, this is Shriti from three eighty-one Prospect Street. Um. I know we discussed, there was commentary around the road, the cul-de-sac that goes from Prospect Street. Um, towards these lots is going to be a private uh, road that will likely be developed by the uh. Um, developer, so just want to know what's the plan for like sidewalks, et cetera, on this particular r- road, and like. What kind of traffic it would um, accommodate, like how, how wide and things like that, so. Is there an existing plan already that we could see, or is that like work in progress?
If you like, I can pull up that plan, Mr. Chairman.
That'd be appreciated.
I'm sorry, pardon my ignorance here, um. I'm new to the town, of course, um, and this is my first time owning a home, so. When you say this is all administrative purposes for zoning, so it is. Pretty much like. To uh, the processes like to, when you say zoning, only single-family homes will be built in these lots. But the layout of the lot itself could change, and that is going to determine the construction, is that what you meant?
So I could clarify, zoning can be extremely complicated, so then, no worries, please ask questions, all, all you want, so. What is being proposed before you is two acres, single-family homes. Uh, there is a mechanism uh, for this applicant to pursue this. And be able to freeze the, the, the zoning, the book of zoning that is in front of the town. Uh, at the time of his submission, what, which was quite some time ago. Um, and so if he were to get an approval for this. Plan, which is two acre, single-family homes, as designed, uh, that's what he could construct. But he does, it, it, it doesn't require him to move forward with it. Uh, and then if he decides to move forward with a different project, that's a, maybe of a different type of zoning. Uh, that he froze, he would have to reapply. He would have to do this hearing in front of the board and the public. You would receive a notice again, and we would go through the process of reviewing that project as well. Uh, so right now, uh, the, if, if approved, the only thing that could be constructed is exactly what you see here. Uh, today, um, and if he, if the applicant chose not to move forward, we would essentially restart the process again.
Got it.
Jim, is it better safe than the public? This is a procedural application.
Well, it, it very well could be, uh, but as the board has, you know, done so, uh, you know, we're reviewing this as if it was. To be constructed, which I think is the proper way. Right, exactly, and so, uh, just quickly, so this is the access point, hopefully you go, everyone can see the plan here. Uh, Prospect Street, uh, so again, those, those uh, lots on Prospect Street are fronting in Franklin, this is all Franklin property. Uh, but then towards the back here, this is the town line. Franklin deemed this to be granted access, granted the way, the subdivision way. But stipulated that it must be a private way, uh, so, um. For continuity sake and practical sake, uh, you know, the recommendation to Bellingham is to make this a private way as well. Uh, there is sidewalk being proposed on the, on the one side here, uh, that would go along. Um, the proposed house locations, as you can see, as you're going up. Um, you know, as one of the pub, members of the public was mentioning, I believe this is your lot. Um, the proposed house is laid out here, that's not a requirement, though, through our subdivision control law for it to be the exact location. Uh, it could shift some, uh, depending on soils and topography. Um, continuing up, there are some basins, so these are drainage structures, kind of open air drainage areas. Um, that would be fenced in uh, per our subdivision control law regulations. And then, as you see, single-family houses kind of lining this cul-de-sac. Um, with the sidewalk going to the end here. Uh, and that, let me zoom out a little bit to give a little more context. That's essentially uh, the project, there are a number of other A and R lots, a couple of A and R lots, excuse me. A and R lots are approval-not-required lots, so those are lots that are, just as you see here, they meet our, our subdivision uh, regulations. For the amount of frontage. Uh, regulations for the amount of frontage that runs along a road and the lot area, so the the kind of the big, the lot, your lot. Size, and those don't need further review, so those are allowed to go along the. Uh, way, let me see if I can pull those up here. Um, so we see a cou- yeah, a couple of lots over here, you see there's a large wetland. Uh, that would need to, they would need to stay out of, but there's all these, these uh ultimately seventeen. Uh, lots here that uh could be developed into, again, single-family. Uh, residential uh lots as proposed.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you for your participation. Any other hands raised?
There is one more question regarding uh conservation, and I I. I'll note, um, and the applicant can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the Conservation Commission has rendered a decision already. And that's under appeal uh at this time, you could certainly speak with Ann Matthews, the conservation agent. Uh, she could certainly give you more information, and I know Amy Sullivan's there who can uh provide. Uh, who's in the office most often and can certainly provide you that contact information.
So at this point, um. You might like to discuss waivers.
Yeah, just a second, and I could pull those.
Outline your request for waivers. We can pull it up, too, we'd appreciate.
Yep, I'll pull it up right now for everyone to see. So as we discussed uh previously, uh, through this, there is a number of different uh waivers being requested. Uh, test pits and soil bor- borings and environmental analysis. Uh, also, first off, test pits and soil burn it borings, uh, the. Planning Board previously, and again, you could certainly uh chime in, uh, but. Uh, previously, this was waived uh at the moment. Uh, so that if the applicant does not pursue uh this development uh plan. Uh, then the the, you know, the forest is not disturbed greatly by many soil. Uh, test pits, because our regulations require, I believe it's every one hundred uh linear feet in the road and every lot has. As multiple, as well as every basin has three, uh, which would create a large disturbance that may not be necessary. Uh, so I I believe the board was uh seeking to condition that. Uh, you know, prior to to building permits, obviously, environmental analysis was was uh as historically done. Uh, we seek the guidance of the Conservation Commission, the commission. Uh, concurrently reviewed this and rendered a decision, and it's now an appeal period. Uh, traffic analysis, uh, the full study uh was was wait or is requested to be waived. As these are two acres, single-family lots, uh, many of which are are what what we call the A and R, the approval-not-required lots that could be done. By right. Um, I believe uh landscape uh was provided on some of the plans. It was notarized, scale plans were provided. Uh, detention basins are now on independent lots. Basins will be maintained in a homeowner association, chain link fence are now on there, required tree plantings are provided. Um, and that is all.
Do we work out a document, or does Lou have to request a motion in single one?
You're all in favor of them, I think you've been voting in bulk.
I think with thirty states, you might like to take them one at a time. You feel it?
Some of the waivers aren't valid.
Okay, do we uh reduce the waivers that are no longer valid?
Let's talk about, um.
Mr. Chairman, oh, oh, excuse me, sorry.
Oh, I would just say the, they all the plans that no longer valid, we've provided those. Um, detention basin, that's no longer valid, as we corrected that. And uh fence is no longer valid, so we've done that. Think uh those, those two or three, uh, we've already addressed. Rest of them, I think, I think, uh, all the notarized documents. Well, that's a waiver still. Both three or four are been addressed in the plan.
You'll be concerned, I mean, it's it's sounding confusing.
Yeah, well, I just, I know some of, I didn't want to vote on waivers that aren't. That are no longer questioned essentially, so, I mean, I would probably just, I I would take each valid one.
Yeah, I would, Jimmy, I'd like to go through the valid waivers, one by one, I don't want to disagree.
Yep, not a problem, I can uh, I can read those off individually if you like.
Please.
So uh, section two forty-five dash ten A one E, which is the test pits and soil borings, the request is. Um, to waive this standard at this time. Uh, you could certainly condition this further that the proper test bits are done prior to building permit.
Live a motion.
Can I cast a question, Jim? Jim, are we waiving that, or are we conditioning it? Because we could have, we could actually push it into the conditions that basically say that we're not going to waive it. And we'll address it at the time that, you know, pre-preconstruction meeting or something.
Right, yeah, yeah, that's a good point, that's a good point, I mean, you could, you could really do it uh in either direct, either way you wish as the board. Uh, we could state it as, you know, requested waiver that was considered and conditioned. Um, if that's, if that's how you prefer to phrase it, we could certainly do that as well.
I think because right now, my understanding, we already have three conditions we're talking. So based on the discussion beyond the waivers.
Okay, so in this particular situation. I would like to actually condition it, that it goes beforehand.
Fine. I would take every waiver now become a condition.
So I'm gonna s- not waive, I don't want to waive that.
You want to make it.
I want to make it a conditional.
Okay.
Pre-construction, Jim, pre-construction condition.
Prior, prior to building, prior to building permit would be my recommendation, that way. Uh, we typically, how it would be done is we would have a pre-construction. He would, uh, the applicant would outline what his plan is, and that could be include soil testing. Um, and then prior to building permit, which means like the foundation, um, he would have all of that knowledge of the soil testing in hand.
May I, uh, hear Jack, Jim, what, um. I'm not, not very in tune with what the construction inspection processes in Bellingham. Who, or or do we have like milestone inspections done by staff or the peer reviewer? How does that work?
Yep, yeah, so we do, we do have periodics that, uh, depending on what the project is, obviously, but. Uh, border health witnesses, soil testing, uh, foundations, uh, and and building permits are are. Uh, reviewed by the building department, infrastructure periodically reviewed by our DPW inspector. Uh, so throughout the process, uh, I and Amy are getting updates on on project development.
So the way I've seen this situation handled in town, because I understand you want to see the soil. Strata underneath the basins, it's key. Um, if the board's amenable to this, we will, staff, you know, rather than condition soil borings prior to building permit. It, would everybody be interested in potentially putting a condition in where during construction, prior to. See that, you know, whoever it is can verify soil conditions.
Not that I want to, not that I want to um go against what I, before the second book, but my feeling would be that for the roadway. You'd want to do your soil testing before you actually. So I would say, uh, we should. The board should make a condition that maybe we give the uh planning board X number of days' notice. Prior to starting construction, that we perform these soil testing for the roadway.
Only for the roadway.
Yeah, only for the roadway, but the lots themselves, you know, we, there's a soil testing procedure that needs to be. Undertaken by the Board of Health for separate systems, and we've already done the soil borings for the basins, or what the, those, if they change, then. We can go back out there and do it, but I I would say a certain notice period to the planning board prior to commencing construction. And then we do testing or whatever is required of us at that time. And then we start construction on the roadway.
Jim, what do, what do you think?
I've, that's certainly uh fine in regards to the roadway, um, and then for each lot could be prior to building permit, that's not a. Not a problem either, and and with the basins prior, obviously, prior to just um construction of the basins. Uh, we would need um those soils witnessed and and re- and peer reviewed.
Okay, again, this is a good view, I think we're going to deny that waiver.
We'll, we'll withdraw that waiver.
Yeah, that works.
And then make a conditional as outlined. So Jimmy, if you use outline those, that those conditions.
Yes, absolutely, yeah, so we'll have separate one, separate conditions for this soil testing for a street. Uh, basin and foundations or or lots, uh, that's not a problem, and that waiver is withdrawn. Um, two forty-five dash ten A one J, which is environmental analysis, and this was referred to the. Conservation Commission as they're doing a concurrent uh review.
All those are favorable.
Jim, just, just, we need to vote on every single one.
Uh, well, it's up to the, it's the discretion of the board, um, you know, depending on the project, historically, you can do it. Uh, in bulk or in individually, we all, there's only one or two more left, actually, two more left.
I'd rather do it.
Nice question on this, so the environment, Jim, the, this situation here typically handled by conservation. It's in litigation right now, it still has to have an approved plan at the end of the day, right? If the court comes back and says one thing, that the, that the conservation has to move forward in it, in a certain direction. They have to move forward in a certain direction, but at the end of the day, there has to be an approved plan. Is that correct, Jim?
Uh, well, yeah, so, I mean, ideally, uh, Conservation Planning Board have the, a mirror. Or an exact replica plan, uh, the same approved plan, and and there's still an opportunity for that, that to work itself out. Um, you know, it it ultimately is going to depend on how uh it gets resolved uh with. Conservation DEP and the applicant, uh, for this, the environmental analysis, if you, if again, if. We want to condition this to say, um, you know, an environmental analysis uh shall be completed. Um, you know, prior to construction, if if the planning board deems necessary. And, you know, the applicant can submit a request for uh determination uh when, when they're ready, you could certainly do that to. Give yourself some more time.
Jim, does this, this would typically go out to peer review, though, right? This is, this is what peer review does for the planning board as well, right?
Well, typically for the environmental analysis, the peer, peer review would review it in. Uh, more so in the terms of the regulations of the Weather's Protection Act, uh, so it, there's a lot of overlap. And uh, and the Conservation um Commission Regulations and the Weather's Protect, the local regulations. And the Weather's Protection Act are uh more restrictive, um, and so. We tend to rely, historically at least, on the Conservation Commission and their review of. And recommendation as they would typically provide it back to the board, um, and ultimately, we get to, um. A reba- a plan set that we both agree on.
So the language about approved plan, what would be your recommendation on? Is there a language or something like that that could go into that? I'm just asking as one member, but.
I, I think you were.
You guys are, okay, so how, is that a, is that something we can condition and come up with some language that would. Tie it to, has to be an approved plan or something like that?
Well, so ultimately, your plan that you're approving is the approved plan. If what comes out of um conservation is different, there's going to need to be a modification. To one of those approved plans, um, because it it can only be uh constructed in accordance with the plans. And they would be, the applicant would be in violation of one of them. Uh, so a modification would have to be done, whether that's back to the planning board. Or back to the Conservation Commission, that'll ultimately be up to the applicant.
It has to go back to one of us, so an approved plan with the perhaps peer review if needed. I don't know what the language would be.
Yeah, it would depend on what the modification was.
Agreed, so we don't, we don't know, we don't know, we don't know, so we have to protect that.
Yeah, so usually, there's a condition of the, uh, any change in the plan, or amendment to the plan would require. Approval of the board.
Yeah, typically, we would send this out to peer review, we'd go back with everything that we see, it would be a done deal, instead, we're conditioning it. So.
Unfortunately, that's where we're at, but.
So we've got to be a little wider.
I thought we didn't try, sorry.
I, I understand, so.
But usually.
That condition, Jim.
Yep, yeah, so, uh, yes, so the standard condition that this board typically includes is just that, uh, any modification to. The approved plan must come back, and this board can determine whether it's a minor or major, and if major, it would need to go to a public hearing.
So do you want to remove that waiver and go with the condition?
Are you, are you, um, well, yeah, well, I don't know, whether or not, so whether or not it's a waiver or not, I mean.
I think we're trying to make it into a condition of a favorable decision.
The waiver is for.
Not wait, I don't want to waiver, I want to put a condition.
Yes, I, I, yes.
I'm not gonna, I'm saying, we're not gonna.
We don't have to do it, but.
But if it comes out, we gotta do something.
Okay, sure, but.
We should do the same thing with the traffic study, although, right?
Yep.
Because that's kind of changed.
Well, yeah, well, we're talking about a different project at that point, I don't expect, I don't expect a waiver.
But why, again, this is a more, a moving topic.
Right, right.
Yeah, I think we're, we're covered for a lot of this stuff, right? Over the the modification, because this waiver is for the envi- the environmental analysis, which was it?
Which we've done.
You've done it, it just, it hasn't been technically.
Right, yeah. Yeah, well, quite honestly, I don't know if this board has even seen the environmental analysis that we've prepared or conducted. So we technically have done it, so if you want to condition that, again, I don't like this point. If any changes that require environmental analysis in the future. We require to come back to the board and, and suspension on the board.
Mr. Chairman, if I may just, yeah, if if for both the environmental analysis and traffic analysis. Um, you know, maybe waived at this time, but if a modification to the plan is requested, the board uh may require. Uh, both an an environmental analysis and traffic analysis uh to um review that modification.
That'd be fine, so then you would technically remove the.
Right.
The question.
Right, okay.
I think my filing app probably won't, however, I believe there are three more conditions. Uh, there's stormwater infrastructure, that's in the peer review. And that's a condition, correct?
Right, so stormwater would be conditioned for peer review prior to building permit, and I believe that's the last remaining. Uh, one.
Yeah, I believe we have two others. A condition on outlining, um, five twenty-five Lake Street. Meeting with the homeowner and determining.
Well, that's, I'd like to say will matter, but I mean, certainly. Well, that's, I'd like to see what matter, but I mean, certainly, but it's, it's in our collective.
Best interest.
Right, to, to do that, so that, that really affects what we can do with that intersection in the future.
And then we also need the condition for the ownership of, um, Lake Street.
Yeah, that can be a some.
I, I would recommend, that could just be a finding that, uh, you know, for consideration needs to be, uh, reviewed. To work with any property, uh, owner, uh, for that intersection.
That's fine.
Well, um, I see one here that, uh. Two forty-five dash twelve, eight, uh, changing grade by seven percent. Seven feet from existing grade, I think we just have a certain section prior, just before the crossing, that's a little bit higher than.
Do you want to say best way to address that?
Yeah, the, I mean, the board can waive, uh, that, so the seven, seven percent gr- seven feet from existing grades. Provide for more reasonable transition approaching wetland crossing and after the wetland crossing. Um. It, you certainly can consider that, that waiver and change the green. That's as proposed in the, in the plan that you have before you.
Yeah, I think that's another one that could change due, cause there's alternatives analyses.
Well. I don't wanna get too deep into that technical aspect of it, but.
Oh, no.
Yeah, I usually.
So, so both of it, it was in the Franklin side has already been removed.
Yeah.
So you then go back up to a seven feet and have a steeper approach into the crossing now. Crossing seems to be the, uh, topic of disagreement.
Correct.
And so, um, depending on what conditions come out of that. Uh, we may not need the seven feet waiver, but it's better to have it so we can have, uh. Won't have to come back to the board if we negotiate with D E P or subdivision. So it's better to have the waiver so we have flexibility. We have to come back to the board and ask.
Do you want to be better to make that a condition as opposed to a waiver, based on what happens in court?
You could certainly condition that further review needs to take place and prior to building permit, you can make that determination.
I would feel comfortable doing that.
Well, by the time we go for building permits, this road's gonna be built, so we, we would need something ahead of that.
Well, you, you, you certainly will within your rights to request it at any point, just not, not after building permit.
Okay, alright, so why don't we leave that as. Uh, we'll come back and we, and once we finalize.
So actually what's taking up?
No, uh, it's no actual. My waivers are gone, I mean.
Right, I understand.
Oh, but I think that one has an effect on how we design the rest of the.
That's what happens with the litigation.
Right, well, yeah.
I don't think that the, I don't, granting the waiver, I don't think would be a huge deal because if you're not. If D E P comes back and says, no, we want this changed, it's gonna have to be. If, if D E P says that this stream crossing is. Is the best option as far as, you know, minimizing disturbance of wetlands. Then, I mean, I would be in favor of granting that waiver if it means that the. The, the wetland disturbance is going to be, um, lessened.
Mm-hmm.
And D E P or somebody is going to determine that, that's not in our, our review.
Mm-hmm.
That makes sense?
I, I agree. Does doing that though, pull the rights out of anybody? I'd rather not, I mean, if we don't, we just don't give the waiver and make it, make it a condition. It's there, it's there.
Well, then I don't think we could prove this plan, that, that were the case.
Condition that. Well, I. Condition that it repeat, gets reviewed or.
Well, see, the, the, the project has been designed, the plan has been designed with that waiver. In place, being advanced, so. I would prefer to have that waiver granted so that we can, like you said. Be able to negotiate and discuss with D E P or Conservation, uh, whoever. What we can do with that intersection rather than have to say, oh, okay, we gotta go back, ask the planning board if we can do it. Now, the thing with the crossing, so you know. There's a, there's a, there's a disagreement over whether or not we should use this existing crossing that's been there for fifty or sixty or seventy years.
Mm-hmm.
Berth is. Looping this roadway out all the way around the rest of the site.
I know.
If that happens, we have to come back here anyways for a new, a new plan. So, seven foot waivers, they're gonna make a difference. But if, if some, for some reason, we were to be in a manageable situation where both sides are. Coming together with the E P's, you know, interaction, then the seven feet, the cut and fill of the seven feet. Could be important to our final, the final disposition of the crossing. And it would be easier to have that negotiation without having to, oh, we gotta go back to the planning board for, uh, permission.
That's good, the negotiation part is kind of the concerning part, I think, for us.
But we're, but I'm really able to go.
We don't want you.
You don't know.
You wanna leave it up to my discretion?
No, we're gonna condition it, we're gonna condition, I'm gonna condition it.
I think we just don't want you to go to D E P and say, you know, if they say this, you know, the, the stream crossing and.
What you folks are with the plan, we're only talking about fifty feet of. You know.
They have.
Theor- theoretically, theoretically speaking, we could go change the grade now and come back with a modified plan and. Wouldn't know the difference, so.
It sounds like we have something, I guess, more as you're.
Uh, uh, whatever you folks wanna do.
I think we make the condition. Is that reasonable?
But that, well, I don't know what the condition's gonna be, but I mean, it should be allow some give and take on both sides, if it becomes necessary. With the negotiation, would you do then the board would be willing to grant the waiver, something along those lines, to give us some direction that. Not opposed.
Well, not in favor until we get the decision.
Yeah, I would specifically state that, you know, if deemed that. The waiver will indeed create less, the most, the less disturbance to the resource area than we would be. Favor, I think that's, at least that's how I.
I, I, to get this real quick. I don't like to speculate about what might happen in the future, if, you know, the if in the future, so let's just table this.
This one?
Yeah, just, well, cause I don't think any of us are, uh, other than him, he's, he's the only one that probably understands this.
I understand that, that's why we're here to be here.
Right, so we're, we're leaving things.
We don't know.
That happen in the future, so let's not do it.
We'll take no action on that waiver.
Okay, so what do I do with, you want to go back with the revised plan on the my law? And look at it, uh, and. It really is, um, small area, means that.
How long will this process take?
I'm sorry, two.
With conservation?
Oh, good, you know, uh, that's, that's a state review, not sure, yeah, I wouldn't be able to tell you exactly. This could be a few months, maybe more.
Do you have any suggestion?
Uh, my suggestion would be to condition it, um, and, and, and see how it plays out and if the, and if it's. Uh, you know, if there's no change to the plan, um, at the end of the day, the applicant come back with that, and it's a quick approval.
So, you remember what that? Yeah, why not?
Okay.
I'm, I'm gonna be back in.
I understand.
I don't, nobody changes, you know.
So, um. Excuse me, uh, my apologies to Tina, I think you have to listen these, uh, just quite a few times. But we tried to, uh, transition everything into conditions, um.
And so the other, the other waiver requests are all withdrawn.
Correct.
The basin, that's.
Yep. One thing, um, that makes things confusing. Gonna try to appeal to common sense, common sense here. The fence on the, the ponds. Does it have to be chain link or could it be another type of fence? Trying, you know, get something you refer to with more aesthetic, which means.
Yeah, we, we didn't know what was specified in the regulations, we, we just backed out of chain link fence, black chain link.
I, I think we, we've done, uh, other types, other than the chain. Jim, what's your, uh, feeling here?
So the regulations call for chain link, um, I think it's meant so that you can see N as well and through. Um, it's ultimately up to the board, though, the regulation does call for chain link.
Yeah, plus they don't stick out as much. Behind it, in front of it, so it kind, it kind of loses itself.
Alright, that's fine.
Do we have Jim prepared draft?
What I would like to do is, um, last question to Jim first before we.
Yep.
Hey, Jim, it's the lighting plan and the landscaping plan, we typically do those, right? We don't have that at this point, right?
Oh, so, uh, nope, lighting proposed, I don't believe unless that, there is that one at the end of the cul-de-sac, I believe. Well, I could pull it back up, um, and it's landscaping per each lot. But yeah, there's no separate, uh, landscape plan or lighting, like a photometric plan. Uh, you know, it's a subdivision, uh, so there's no, it's. You know, different than you, what we're used to with development plans that we see more regularly where. There's light spill on different lots, this would just be. Uh, I believe just one street light, um, it, or actually, no, excuse me, there's a few street lights. Um, and then, um. Yeah, then, then you can certainly ask for a separated out landscape plan if, if that's what the board, uh, wishes. Uh, but again, it's, we have the, there's a metric, uh, within our subdivision regs, I believe it's one every fifty feet, um, that is required.
We, I suspect what you wanted, we may wanna go with this. Are you assuming you're gonna put lights at the end of every driveway?
Well, I, I don't, I don't know, if you have a streetlight requirement. Have a streetlight on the three hundred feet or two hundred feet. And then I think the waiver that we asked for the landscape plan, I think, um. Planting of street trees before occupancy was what I thought, but we were asking for a waiver. Because typically you wouldn't plant the street trees until sort of like the final pavement and. The driveways are in and the houses are in rather than. Prior to constructing on the lots, so it's a sequential type of issue for us.
Jim, what's your recommendation on that? I mean, should we put some sort of condition on that, all of those?
You could certainly, uh, honestly, the, the photometric plan, I, I, I wouldn't, uh. My, my recommendation wouldn't be to be concerned regarding the subdivision, um, as, you know, street lights. Um, or, or the streets, we've historically actually looked to the individual property owners. Uh, to add additional lighting, especially since this will be a private roadway. Um, and but landscape plan, it would, it's good, there, the applicant will be required to do the. Uh, the number of trees, uh, per linear foot, if the board wanted to, um. Have an opportunity to take a look at that plan, uh, to maybe bury the trees, uh, in distance as you've done in some cases in the past. You could certainly condition it to have an opportunity to work with the applicant prior to installation of trees.
The, the waiver, uh, outside of the landscape plan, but the waiver at two forty-five dash fifteen C six. Required trees be planted before a certificate of occupancy is granted to each lot.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm saying that trees. Will get damaged during the train, we should replant them prior to finished pavement being installed on the roadway. So, that's what everything.
What I would like to have is, um, a condition. That landscaping plan would be provided. Prior to the roadway being finished for each lot. And that way we can see a landscape plan. And at that point, we could work with the developer to change the, uh, the stagger between.
Cause you're gonna have driveways and you're gonna have curb cuts and, you know, we don't know where the.
And I realize this may not happen.
Yeah.
The event that it does, I'm trying to protect it then.
We typically do, do that on big projects.
Oh, yeah.
This is all, so we're just trying to protect this.
Sure, absolutely, I mean, we, we, if we're. Get out of subdivision, then we'd be happy, we'd certainly have our landscape plan. For buffers and landscaping and aesthetics and all those things need to be considered, so sure, that, that would be the case, but. Uh, we're just talking within the right of way, you know, street trees and grass drift and. You know, really don't have, the, on the lots are independent from what, what they want to see. Uh, you know, owners will decide what they want for landscape, you know, those lots.
Sounds like a condition then, Jim. Was, any other suggestions, Jim?
Uh, no, not at this time, I think you guys have done a good job of conditioning anything that might be outstanding, again, these are. This is a two acre subdivision, uh, project, so it's, you know. I know we don't get these very often, so it's, it's a little bit different of a, of a program, but, uh, no, I think, I think at this time you guys have done a. A, a good job of vetting the, the project and, um, and, and conditioning it appropriately.
Before, uh, one last more input, if there's anyone from the public, before we, uh, close the public hearing.
Doesn't look like it on this end.
I would like to motion, uh, to close the public hearing.
So, let me add to this, um. I, I, I assume that the next step would be the mega motion draft of.
That's coming.
So, is it? The necessary to answer it closed tonight, in case there's some, that it comes along, you know, I don't.
Jim, do we have to close the public hearing before we make a decision? I think we do.
Before you make a decision, yes, um, uh, yes, that would be recommended.
Prior to a decision, but we're not making.
Okay, it's, it's, okay, so if we ask you to draft a favorable decision, can we still leave the public?
You, you can leave the public hearing open and continue the matter and have me begin to draft a favorable condition per the. Findings and determinations and conditions stated to date. Uh, but before reviewing any decision, um, I, I would recommend you closing the, the public hearing.
So what we have to do is leave the public hearing open, have a draft decision. Open the meeting, ask for any more public comment, listen to public comment if there is somewhere, there isn't. Then close the public hearing at the next meeting. And review his draft decision.
In the case there's some sort of nothing, like conservation.
Yes, it, hopefully, I don't think it's gonna happen.
I mean, uh, Mr. Chairman, the only objection I would have at that is the appeal period doesn't start until you file the decision, so.
Correct.
We're just pushing this hand.
I understand.
I don't know what's gonna happen between now and the next two weeks or whatever.
What, what I, I think we can still accomplish what our goal is. But I will leave the public hearing open. Uh, we'll open that next meeting, with any updated information. Ask for public input, close the public input. Uh, then we'll ask, we will have asked you to make a favorable decision. And that point was, public input is closed, you can discuss that draft decision. That's so complicated, I think that accomplishes, Jim, what we wanna do, correct?
That, that is perfectly fine on my end if, if that's fine with the board.
No, I don't believe so, I think we just need a motion of Jim draft a favorable decision. No, I don't believe so, I think we just need a motion of Jim draft a favorable decision.
Was that, was that motion I hear?
And we don't want to, we don't want to repeat them. Kind of long.
I'll find, thank you very much.
Hold on, hold on, we need to vote on it. Need to be seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion before, please say if I'm saying aye.
Dennis was aye.
Brian's is not, Bill's is aye.
Bill's was aye.
Nick, aye.
The motion passes.
When do we want to continue this to? Our next meeting is the twenty-seventh, and that's we have our. That would be, okay.
May eleventh, we have a rather robust agenda. I, I understand, but regardless, we have to review. Yeah.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
So, May eleventh, we need a motion. Brian.
Second, but Phil. All in favor of continuation to May eleventh, please say if I'm saying aye. Phil goes aye.
Phil aye. Nick aye.
The motion passes.
Aye aye.
Thanks very much. See you, Jim.
We appreciate it. Did we, um. Jim, have we heard that, no, our offer was extended on Depot Street, we heard any response back?
Uh. Yep, the original request, I, since the last time the, the board had talked to, to the applicant for one fifty-two Depot Street. Uh, the request was that the town would be interested in uh, one forty-eight Depot Street as open space if willing. To grant it, uh, the, the, my understanding is the attorney did reach out to. Um, uh, those interested in uh, reserving the rights to it and requested that it may go to the town and. Those individuals that were seeking uh, the preservation or, or the, or the land, the donation of land of one forty-eight. Uh, uh, decided not to uh, move forward with. Uh, the owner of one fifty-two granting the land to the town, that's my understanding of it.
So that has been denied.
That's my understanding, yeah.
Thank you. Um, like to, uh, if we had a chance to look at the approval minutes from the March twenty-third meeting. Any comments?
Great job, Tina.
Excellent job. Do I have a second?
Brian Salisbury, motion?
Made the motion, directed by Dennis. Uh, uh, all members can vote on it in the minutes.
Robert Lucier says aye.
Bill goes aye.
Bill aye.
Nick, aye.
That motion has passed unanimously in this six, never will. Do I have a second?
Thanks, Jim.
I'll second it, Jim, have fun on the yacht this weekend.
We all can vote on this.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.